Brand new easel. That's two of five.
We'll do.
Just want to be a second. Ever in my career I had this much trouble with easels.
Ever.
I can do it. I'll hand it off to you when you're done.
Okay.
Ready?
Ready.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It is 3:03 PM. This is Monday, February 19th, 2024. This is a joint workshop between the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners and our Planning and Development Board. And if everybody could please join me, rise for the pledge.
Why do you need to hit the flag? By the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. And at this time, we'll take a brief moment of silence for reflection and prayer, and also to thank our first responders and the men and women in our military who preserve our freedoms here and abroad. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I'm Andy Dance, the Chair of the Flagler County Commission, and next to me, Mark Langello, the Chair of the Flagler County Planning and Development Board. Today, we're here to the next step in our comprehensive plan update. I think at this time, though, I'm going to introduce, have everybody introduce themselves from left to right for the record of who's here in attendance. So Mr. Lombardo, if you wanted to start us off, we'll go down the, down the dais.
Anthony Lombardo is here.
And the planning board.
Planning board.
Thank you.
Michael Goodman, planning board.
Greg Hanson, county commission.
Leanne Pennington, Flagler County Commission.
Mark Langello, planning board.
Andy Dance, county commission.
Dave Sullivan, county commission.
Fernando Melendez, planning board.
Donald O'Brien, county commission.
Tim Connor, planning board.
And as with these, it's going to be make sure when you speak, you grab that mic so that all of our words are recorded live. All right. At this time, we are going to turn it over to our staff member, Simone, who is going to lead us in this part of the process.
Good afternoon. I'm Simone Kenny, Flagler County Planner. I'm relatively new to the county, starting back in August when this project started. So I've been working with our consultants since I started working with the county, and it's been a very enjoyable time so far. I'll let them tell you all that we have done in the past six or so months. We have Chris Doherty and Nick Hill from Inspire Place Making.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nick Hill. I'm a staff planner with Inspire Place Making Collective, and I'm also the Assistant Project Manager for Flagler 2050. It is an absolute pleasure to be here with you today. I'm also joined by Chris Doherty, our project manager, who will be leading the discussion portion of this presentation. We have a lot of fun ahead, so let's go ahead and dive right in. All right. So we have four main items on our agenda today. First, we're going to give you a brief overview of the plan update process, then provide you a summary of the input we've heard thus far in the public engagement process, discuss some of the things that we've heard from your community and how we can advance them within the plan, and then talk about next steps. So I know everyone up in the dais understands a lot of these concepts, but for the folks at home, what is Flagler 2050? Flagler 2050 is the name of the county's comprehensive plan update. A comprehensive plan is basically a state mandated master plan for the future of your community. And this master plan received its last major update all the way back in 2011. And a lot of growth has happened since 2011, and I think you'll agree that a lot more growth is probably coming. That's why the comprehensive plan update is so important, because it allows us to plan and implement the community's vision for the future of the county, to make sure that that new growth occurs in a manner which advances the community's vision, which we'll talk about here in a second. So a state mandated master plan, that's a lot of big words, right? And that's to cover a lot of topics in regards if we're going to cover the entire county. And that's why it covers things like land use, transportation, conservation, parks and recreation, infrastructure, capital improvements, and the list goes on. The county has also already adopted an economic development element, which is optional within the state of Florida, but something that we've been requested to keep and update as part of this process, which goes to our next question, why update? Well, there's a bunch of reasons why. I've listed a bunch of them in the slides here. But for Chris and I, really, the most important reason is because it allows the community to take a step back, survey where we've come since 2011, and answer three critical questions as a community. Where are we now? Where do we want to go? And how do we get there? And really, our whole public engagement process is centered around working with the public to answer these three questions. So, but before I dive into that process and how it ties into the overall project schedule, I did want to give a quick plug for our project website. It is tinyurl.com/flagler2050. On that project website, there is a bevy of project-related information. There is a short, brief survey you can take. There's an online community forum where you can talk about a lot of the topics that we're going to get to as part of the comp plan update. There is an anticipated project timeline. And there's also a place where you can download reports and past presentations, including this one, which will be up on the project website within the next 24 hours. So please, if you haven't already, visit the project website, interact and provide your input on the project website, and most importantly, share with your constituents in your community to make sure that their voice is heard in this process. So as Simone alluded to, we've actually come before you just under a year ago, maybe a little bit over half a year ago, in the summer of last year at a joint kickoff meeting similar to this. And we've been very busy since that initial kickoff. We started off with some listening sessions, hearing from folks throughout your community in both the public and private sector about the issues and opportunities facing the county. We've also completed two parts of our three-part public workshop series. Public Workshop 1, we asked the public, where are we now? By giving them a series of activity to identify existing conditions within the community. And in Public Workshop 2, which was in January, we asked them, we challenged them to develop a shared community vision for the future of the county. Chris is going to talk about that more in a second, because there's a lot of good stuff there. And then during that whole time, we also have been updating the data analysis, the factual background of the comp plan update, working with your staff. We've already have several visions that have already underway, and it's currently with staff under review as we speak. Most elements have already been revised two or three times at this point. So that brings us to today at the Joint B O C C PDB Workshop. And once we get a good discussion going here and get your input on how the process is going so far, we're going to dive into the updating the goals, objectives, and policies, which for planning nerds like Chris and I, that's the fun part. And before we get too far, though, we'll take it back to the public and ask them the question, how do we get there? How do we implement that shared community vision? And we're actually going to challenge them to craft strategies that we are hoping to advance within the plan itself. And once we get that input from them, we'll go ahead and make those final revisions, and we'll bring it back to you in a workshop setting so you can help us change course or adjust minor policies as needed. Really, any feedback is going to be welcome at this workshop to make sure that when we bring it back to you at the adoption hearings, which is tentatively scheduled for August, it's at a place where you'd like it to be before you're expected to make a vote on it. And then after that, we have the plan publishing and promotion to make sure that the community is aware of how special this plan is, that it's a community vision, that it's a roadmap for achieving that community vision by the year 2050. Now, Chris is going to talk about some voices that are much more important than either of ours, those of your community members. Chris?
Excellent. Thanks, Nick. So as we mentioned back in July, the, the way that we craft public engagement, every engagement builds off the next. So we want to make sure that we're listening to the folks in the community. Of course, we kicked it off with the board. We heard about some things there. We started to continue that discussion with the listening sessions. And then we went into our first public workshop. Of course, we had to build that project website that helped us craft the questions and the survey. So everything builds off the previous engagement. So during our, our listening sessions in August, we just have some quick bullet points here. So the strengths that our folks that provided their input during the listening sessions stated that, you know, there are rich natural resources, particularly along the coast. Other strengths, abundance of outdoor recreation opportunities, diversity of local businesses, several historic communities. There's this old Florida small-town feel and lots of development potential. Weaknesses, increasingly unaffordable housing market. We're seeing that a lot throughout the state. Lack of housing diversity, destruction of natural resources by new development, community-wide flooding in certain areas of the county, limited youth and senior services and activities, and then poor coordination between local governments. So we took that information, and that helped us craft the exercises and activities that we provided during Workshop 1. Really well-attended workshop. At the end of August, we utilized, you know, a number of outreach methods, which we've continued to use for, for each of the, the two workshops. That summary is available for download for folks who weren't able to attend. So as Nick mentioned, we, we like to upload all the project documents to the project website. Even if you haven't been able to participate, you can hear what fellow residents are, are providing during those workshops. So what did we hear? With respect to land use, we heard folks, you know, they want to expand conservation, the, the inventory of preservation and conservation lands throughout the county, diversify the, the commercial market, some of which, you know, the county may not have complete control, but this, we're listening, you know? Cluster residential development, enhance scenic corridors, preserve cultural resources. With respect to parks and conservation, folks would like to strengthen natural resource protection, maintain and improve county parks in the recreation system, connect and improve bike paths throughout the, the county, develop and provide environmental education programs as well. With respect to housing, folks would like to, to see growth concentrated, or pardon me, concentrate the new residential growth in, in areas where you've got infrastructure, diversify the housing stock. Again, this is kind of confirming what we, we heard during the listening sessions. Increase the affordability of homeownership, address short-term rentals, and establish open space requirements for new development. With respect to the economy, folks would like to facilitate small business development throughout the, the community, diversify industries and employment opportunities, encourage farm-to-table experiences, promote local ecotourism, and increase the presence of food trucks. So some of these are, you know, small requests, right? Again, maybe not something we can facilitate, you know, as the county, but things that we can help suggest throughout the community. With respect to the transportation system, enhance the, the safety of the local transportation network, expand local mobility options, providing for alternative modes of transportation, not just looking at the, the car. Expand the sidewalk network, increase bus service, hours, frequency, and route variety. Build additional bridge over the Matanzas River. We know some of these things may not be feasible, but again, these are things that we've heard. With respect to utilities, increase infrastructure maintenance funding, incorporate green infrastructure into new developments, expand broadband access, address failing septic tank systems, and then underground electric utility lines. Some of these things are not cheap, I can tell you. So while we created the project website, Nick mentioned the, the survey. So these are the, the topics that were addressed in the survey. So land use, housing, transportation, of course, is kind of follows the, the comprehensive plan itself. And, and I'll give you a, a few of the priorities that we're seeing come out of that survey. So priority number one, preserve and conserve our natural environment. Again, kind of confirming what we heard at the listening sessions, then confirming what we heard at the first public workshop. Preserve rural areas in character. That's priority number two. Priority number three, that's a, a two-way tie with stormwater drainage and flooding concerns, with focusing on resiliency and disaster preparedness. Priority number five, ensure an adequate water supply for existing and the future population. And then priority number six, focus future development and growth in areas that are already served by infrastructure. Okay. We asked folks to, to give us their top three concerns related to growth within the county, and these are the top five responses within that question. So infrastructure was number one. Impact on natural environment is number two. Number three, change in community character, traffic congestion, and finally, housing affordability. We're not, we're not going to summarize every one of the questions on the survey. We're just giving you a kind of a snippet of where we're at today, but we'll summarize the entire survey when we're complete, or when the, the, the public engagement is complete. So which of the following public facilities and services are you most satisfied with? Related to transportation, number one, greenways and trails. Number two, bicycle facilities. And number three, the condition and connectivity of the road. Those are actually two that were tied. And then non-transportation related, number one, fire and EMS. Number two, law enforcement. And then number three, solid waste. Okay. And we asked folks about what types of housing would they like to see in the future? Really interesting, mixed use came out, number one there. Fifty-five percent of the respondents selected mixed use. And in this case, we're showing vertical mixed use with retail on the bottom and residential above. Single family came in at second with 52%. And then townhomes, that kind of missing middle density there in housing type at 45%. So workshop number two, as Nick mentioned, that was in January. Not as big of a turnout as we had hoped, but again, very similar outreach methods, a lot of more signage out in the community. Again, that workshop has been summarized, and, and it's either up on the website now or will be here within the next 24 hours. So what do, oh, sorry about that. So this is, we, we did several exercises for folks. We had a population growth activity. So we asked folks, okay, we've got, we know we've got a set number of folks that we've identified in our population projections that are going to be coming to the unincorporated area of the county, because again, that's what your, your comprehensive plan addresses. Where are those folks going to live? Where are we going to have the, the future populations come? And you can see those red dots. You see, you know, a portion in the northwest part of the county. We've got a smattering of them kind of in the, the center and then in the southwest, just south of Palm Coast, just east of the city of Benel. So we, and that's kind of where you're seeing the concentrations of, of where folks think the, the growth should occur. We also conducted a transportation prioritization activity. So we've heard a lot of ideas about, you know, what the, the future of the transportation system should look like here in the county. Number one, so we had folks, they had a, a number of tokens that they could spend on each activity. And number one was a streets inclusive of pedestrian cycling and vehicle-friendly infrastructure. So kind of, if you're familiar with the complete streets concept, that's kind of where those folks decided to spend their tokens on. And then establishing a public bus system, number two, really interesting. And then that was tied with maintenance and repairing roadways. And then tied at number three is expand and connect trails. And last but not least, establish, establishing a light rail system, which may seem like it's completely out of reach, but who knows, one day it might be a, a regional solution. Maybe it's not just for Flagler County, but tying in multiple counties, kind of like you see in central Florida. Okay. So we asked folks to, to help us with the vision. We had a, a big board with graphics. And again, this is all based on what we've already heard. So we, we prepared this board, and they got to select up to 10 items on this board. I think we did feature about 24 choices.
Twenty.
Twenty choices. And these are the, the, the top nine selections here. So conserve the natural environment is very, so again, confirming what we heard prior, maintain and improve existing infrastructure, diversify the local industry and employment opportunities. I'm not going to continue to name all of these, because again, this is kind of, you're seeing the themes. They're, they're confirming at each step of the, the public engagement process. So as we mentioned, didn't have as many folks join us at the second workshop as we had hoped. So we pivoted a little bit, and we've updated the website to include those activities that we did during the second workshop and, and essentially mirrored them in the, the, the virtual realm. So if folks didn't get to join us at workshop number two, it's all good. We can, we can get their, their input on the website, because again, we've, we've essentially mirrored those activities for them on the, on the website. So we, it's still very, very important for folks to, to take a look at the website. We've updated the act. We do this frequently with, with a lot of projects, update the activities so it's fresh and new as we get entered different phases of the project. But this is certainly two that we, we hope folks won't miss out on. Okay. So now the discussion, we probably should have let these come in, animate them in separately. But let's start with question number one. This is the discussion part. So before we, we go any further, did, did any of the inputs surprise you folks? Or, or did any of the, the items that we shared with you resonate with you all? All right. So just, I'll try to point out if you've got some comments.
I'm involved with disadvantaged travel program in the county. Disadvantaged travel program in the county. And the, the problem is, that is our public transportation system that exists right now. Thirty-three buses, drivers, store to door. There's very much a true lack of understanding of that system by the general public, unless they're using it. They're disadvantaged and they're tied into the system. They love it, but in general, people are not aware of that. To go anywhere beyond that, even though people say, well, we need a metro bus system, things like that, is, is very difficult as you look at our road structure and where we are and costs. So my surprise always is the lack of understanding of what we have now in the way of public transportation as opposed to what people might think we ought to have. So that would be a place where I was surprised.
Sure. That's a good point. And that is something we talked about during the workshops. All right. Mr. Langello?
I have a couple of questions for you. The participants that you reached out to, were they county, unincorporated counties specifically? Or just general, like incorporated in city limits do, the participants? Do you know?
The, the way that we, I mean, we canvass the entire county.
So they were both city, they were both city residents and county residents?
I believe probably the vast majority, and I have, I'm looking over at Simone. I don't, I don't know where everybody was from, but I, I believe a lot of folks that we've engaged with are, were mostly unincorporated residents.
And I know the last time we set this up, I was, nobody reached out to me, but I talked about different groups. Did you guys reach out to, like, Chamber of Commerce, Home Build Association? There's an engineering group called F Car, many of the social organizations and all that. I, I'm not criticizing any of the work you did do. I'm just trying to find out who is participating up to date that you got this information.
And we, we engaged with a significant number of folks.
The annual group that I just mentioned?
The, the listening sessions, I don't recall specifically, but we did, we did send out a, a, a long list when we did, when we, when we engaged for the listening sessions. But in terms of the, the public engagement, the workshops, it's, we're canvassing everybody. So any, anybody and everybody here in the community.
And when you had these meetings, were you able to sort of, I'm sure you did to some degree, but update their knowledge as to what the comp plan is and what the, the, you know, that 50,000-foot view is all about? And were they prepared then to give you input at that point?
I would say so, yes. Yes. We, in fact, when we, when we engage at this level, we almost always kind of repeat, rehash the, the comp plan 101 slides that, that we had, except we go into a little bit more detail than maybe we included today.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Sullivan's comment, we've, we've had a study done on should we, could we do buses? And they said no. And they said no. You know, so we've already looked at that pretty hard. And our system works and we're pretty proud of it, as a matter of fact, that it works so well. But, you know, we've, we've really rung that one out. And it's just not a, the city is just, city and county are just not designed for a bus route. It's unfortunate.
Right. And I think, you know, kind of some of the initial discussions that we've had with folks was, you know, creating maybe a shuttle or a a loop system that maybe goes out to the beaches and comes back into town, you know, kind of this circulator. Maybe it's just one fixed route, just as kind of an idea, but that that's kind of the the initial discussions. But yeah, fixed route, a bus service is expensive and and you need ridership. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Gobin.
I have a question. In regards to the number of people that responded, what number are we talking about? A thousand, two thousand, five thousand, three hundred?
I think I have the the numbers here. So in terms of, so we've had roughly eight hundred visits to the website so far. We've, and that's five hundred unique visitors. So again, this is through Google Analytics and I don't know exactly how they do all of their metrics, but they can understand based on IP how many different folks have participated. We've had thirty surveys taken and twenty-five contributors on, we have a forum as part of the the activities, so.
Basically, unfortunately, have less than one percent of the population engaged.
That's right.
And responding.
On the website.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, also, not many at the, right at the second workshop. The attendance?
The the attendance at the second workshop was was not great. We had four folks show up.
So I think you have a counter on the online one, on the website online for the survey questions. I think there was, last night when I was on, I think there were seventeen that have taken it since then. So I think the point too is we got to do a better job of getting, getting it out there, getting the message out there and promoting it. Us, you, I mean, it's not acceptable to have that few, that little input driving it.
It's not a representational group. It's not a representational group yet. And I don't, and I'm, and I'm not trying to, you know, undercut anything you've done. That's not that. I'm sure this is kind of typical in a lot of communities too. People don't understand what this is all about and, you know, their input could could matter over the next twenty years. That's why I was mentioning, you know, I reached certain groups to get them, because you speak to a group and they have fifty, maybe a hundred people that they talk to. And if they start getting excited about it, in other ones, you might get bigger representational, you know, demographics than we're doing so far. But I, but so you asked if we were surprised, my surprise was the small representational group and that I'm concerned that we take too much weight, not that we did, we should value all the input we got, too much weight as if that was, you know, basically how everybody in the county felt.
Right, understood.
Well, just look at the attendance here today.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you asked for surprises. Based on the small response, I'm not surprised at what you're getting so far. And and in most of the instances, I kind of ditto what you've got so far, so I'm not surprised at some of the the responses you've got so far, but.
What, anybody else?
Well, I would say though, if you went back to the slide where you, they came out with, those twenty-five people came up with that, that seems to be pretty across the board what we hear from our our constituents though, right? Open spaces, protect historical assets. It's very generalized. I don't know how much more they drill down that they want a little bit of everything, right? So it didn't, didn't surprise me. I mean, I hear that all the time. So I don't know how much, you know.
I'm not surprised, but statistical validity means we should be getting a lot more people.
Yeah, it is tragic that that nobody participated. No kidding.
I don't want to ignore this side.
And for the record, we did not have any questions about feral hogs, so.
Yeah.
And and listen, and 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 I, I'm not really joking because a lot of times, if if it's not contentious, we don't get a lot of folks coming out to our, our, you know, growth management-related workshops, unfortunately.
How detailed do you want some of these comments on what you've done? Because while you were talking, Mark and I noticed that on the transportation prioritization activity page on the, there's a, there's numerous red dots in Flagler Estates, which is a, I don't think it's a growth area.
Right. No, not for a while at least.
Sure.
Yeah, so some.
There's no roads there.
And that was, yeah, that was that priority or growth activity.
And you have them appropriately down in Hunter's Ridge and and other points. That's the one that looked like an anomaly.
Sure.
You know, there's no roads there. You can't get there without going up into St. John's, coming back.
But I think, just one comment on that participation. One indication of of lack of, one indication of lack of participation is also that people are satisfied. They just had a meeting on feral hogs. Well, it's a, it's a problem and it has some, you know, high interest. It's hard to, for people just in general to get their hands around comprehensive, the whole comprehensive plan and then participate. So I I don't know if that's, I'm surprised at the fact that there were a small number of people responding, which may be an indicator in itself, I guess would be my point. But it is a tough subject for people just, okay, tell us what you want to do with the comprehensive plan. You know, that's, that's, that's kind of hard for people to grasp what, how they want to handle that.
Right.
Well, if I could add to that though, I, you, I'm sure you see some of the same things we see. We have certain items that come on our planning board and the room is full.
Right.
And those people are very concerned about our comp plan without understanding what it's all about. They just.
Too specific.
Right. So it, unless, unless you put a sign out, hey, we're going to pave over your, over your, you know, natural resources in your backyard, they don't seem to care. But they do care, they just don't understand that, I guess, what we're doing right here will affect them down the road. When they do, when they do have a complaint, it's already too late. The comp plan's made, LDC is made, these, these developments have already been approved by the comp plan and LDC. And that's why I was just hoping that, especially, the way I look at it, we have, I think I might have brought this up, we sort of have a tale of two counties here. We do have this, this city center sort of, you want to call it that, the Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, Benel, where they have infrastructure and and many homes clustered together. And then we have rural areas and and we also have a scenic corridor on the beach side. And they, they are different. The the needs and the and the future development probably needs to be looked at that, you know, one size fits all probably is not the best approach. So the people on the west side don't really want the same thing than the people in, you know, downtown Palm Coast. Now, I know we're not doing a comp plan for Palm Coast, but but their growth is is going into the county, so that cluster development will be happening on the peripheral of Palm Coast in Flagler County. So we need to be prepared for it and and have, you know, the the management tools to allow that to happen responsibly. But that same tool may not be the appropriate out on the west side of the county. And that, that's what I was concerned with, you know. Did you hear from the people out there versus the people in the city? What were the two different concerns, you know, in general?
And to piggyback on that one, the people in the hammock have an entirely different view of this whole process. And and they don't feel they're being represented, you know. So we need to, as Mark said, I mean, it's different, so many different parts of this equation that we have to kind of string together here. And and I think it's doable. I think we just have to be smart.
Well, that was evident, right? The attendance at the Hammock Community Center portrays the intense participation from that I don't know if having it at the, at the agricultural building limited that, if it would have been better in a different spot, I don't know, but.
Well, we're having workshop three here.
Yeah.
So maybe this is a little bit more central for folks, so.
And I think the important part though, before we get to three, is getting input on two, which is still open.
Right.
So that's what we have to work on.
Yep. And we need to get a a post out there to let folks know that we've got, you know, activities, updated activities on the website.
But I I'll echo what Commissioner Pennington said. I mean, the ones that we hear about that were echoed in, right, in your priorities is preservation, conservation, water quality, infrastructure. Those are things that are constant and and important.
Sure. Would there be anything else you'd like to add to that list or to things that, you know, maybe we haven't talked about or?
Again, I'm going to reiterate what I was just saying. I think we have different elements in different areas. Bringing, and this is more of an LDC execution, but the comp plan should talk about it. If we, you know, the, the idea of of continuing the same growth just by having, you know, fifty by a hundred and twenty foot lots and just keep spreading that growth throughout the county is probably not the best way to preserve our resources and our roads and all that. And but then we have height limits in some areas, and I don't think that people understand that concentration of population is actually going to benefit them to protect the resources by leaving more green belts and all that around. You know, we're not talking about methods, you're talking about, you know, everyone in any community will say, you know, keep our natural resources and keep our water, and those are very generic terms, but how does it apply here? Since we already have infrastructure that's already, you know, clustered around those, the major cities, it seems that we should try to, I don't know if you want to call it an overlay or whatever, but a, in a, in a way that we look at the county in multiple ways and not through one set of glasses. So that's what my concern is, is that the methodology of protecting those things are done uniquely. As Commissioner Hanson was saying, on the, on the beach side, there, there's a whole different, you know, preservation has to do that, but it's, it's in, it's incorporated with a lot of tourists and it's all working in that way, you know. Where, not that they don't have tourists on the west side, but that isn't mindset or the, or the, what's going to be driving it is a whole bunch of tourists showing up on the west side, so.
And I think it's critical to follow up on that too, that that this comp plan takes all that into consideration and it has, it's divided like that. So it's, I mean, this one comp plan is not going to work for the whole county unless we specify the hammock and what's important over there and we specify the west side and what's important over there, because they are two different animals, so.
But you can, you can hear.
Sure. Thank you for that comment, absolutely. That's actually something staff pointed out as well. We've actually been looking at revising the study areas, which is currently in your comp plan today and bifurcated into, I think, seven to ten different parts. And we really looked at, okay, how can we enhance the study area provisions moving forward with the goals, objectives and policies? Because we understand the study area, for example, of the Barrier Island is much different than the rural areas in the western part of the county. And so exactly what you're saying, we'll be looking as, you know, to those different study areas and, you know, ideally making specific goals, objectives and policies that are more suited to those specific areas than a general plan overall.
Did the, did the input so far point to the addition of any optional elements that weren't originally considered?
I don't believe so, Nick. I don't believe that we, if anything, maybe historic resources was one that may have come up, but I don't know that a a full element would be required because we, I mean, we do address that in the plan already.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. So that was one of my primary concerns was the historical resource identification. Because in looking at the statutes, specifically Florida one sixty-three point three one seven, it actually requires us in our comp plan to designate historically significant properties meriting protection. We've not done that in the past, so we've not really taken the moment to identify what rises to a level of meriting protection within the county. What do we do with nationally registered landmarks? We have never discussed or identified or addressed that. And we came to a consensus as a board recently, and we're doing the title work and everything to protect portions of the Brick Road, which is a historical, in our, we all came to the agreement, was historical importance to us. So we need to, particularly as our legal works on that, make sure that we protect it, identify it, build something into the comp plan that says this rises to a level so that we can continue that work. And so I think that's going to be a real big one for this comp plan that they've not seen in the past, which is, you know, hey, how do we identify, define what is historically significant and what do we want to do to protect it or build around it or how we work through it? So I think to me, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think that is important, particularly because we are doing so much work with that Brick Road right now and.
Have you had a historic preservation board?
We have not. And so we have a lot of people doing survey work, identifying properties. Unfortunately, municipalities wrap around. Some of these historicals lie within municipalities and we don't have a lot of jurisdiction there. We've, we know one property that had significant flooding on it, which ruined the the historical importance of the property. So we have issues, but we know where these properties lie for the most part. It's just how do we start to, how do we work them into our plan, you know?
To make historic preservation.
Every development that comes up over in the Barrier Island, every single one of them, that comes up, what are you, what are you doing about historical preservation? And and we don't have a plan, you know, so.
Yeah, so to me, that's going to be a critical piece in the comp. There's not, you know, there's not a mass amount of historical here that we've, you know, let's firm the buildings and things of that. But the Brick Road is a really good example of something that we're actively trying to protect as a board, but we don't have anything in our comp plan that supports us.
Mark? I might even ask Adam to help me on this. I know years before, on our previous planning board, we had Betty Strickland on the board and she was involved with a group that was looking at, and I think of their Indian sites that were of that era, so historically much older than than the Brick Road. The Brick Road, I believe, I agree with you a hundred percent, should be looked at. But this is even stuff beyond that. They were looking at burial grounds and other stuff, but it was totally volunteer. And and if they found something, they were to, you know, maybe come forward. I know there are private groups out there that could at least help put the input, but I know that we did have, you know, several different sources out there of people in the county who were looking at this privately and that we could maybe glean some information. Only thing I'd hate to do is to turn a private organization into the the board that governs, you know, what can or can't happen, but maybe use those boards to, those groups to help give information to a county seated board.
Well, and and, you know, you've, you've got to establish the the ordinance, the historic preservation ordinance. Maybe you have a local registry where you designate properties that are locally significant. So there are things you can do and it may not necessarily be, you know, that you're restricting people from doing certain things, but it's that you're preserving the the history. Maybe not everything gets preserved, you know, in totality, but you're, you're keeping the history alive.
That's right.
Okay. And then that's probably, right, the, how do we get there? The next part is we identify these things and then we, we, we get those included in as objectives in the comp plan.
Absolutely. That's right. Any other topics that maybe we haven't really discussed yet?
We didn't discuss in the future development orders requiring that beach renourishment easement, you know, because we've worked so hard to get easements, you know, and do we want to to make that a requirement if you're beach side and you're building new development so that we don't have to continually piecemeal in easements?
Do we need a a beach management or is that a separate element as well as there?
Coastal management is an element that we deal with. And and part of that is the resiliency aspect of the coastal management. So that, we've got resiliency efforts going on right now from a regional level, but that would be something that we need to look at. So in addition to beach renourishment, which is a, you know, really expensive order, you know, and and one storm comes through and.
Well, it's particularly the easement piece of it for us. We've been lucky enough to work with it.
That's a good point.
We want to work it in in the future.
You, you know, we have a beach management plan in process. Are you going to fold that right into this as a chapter of the?
Well, we have the coastal management element already. Well, we have the coastal management element already in the comp plan. So that's already there, and that's required by statute.
Right. But we have a beach management plan.
Yes, yes. That should already be part of the goals, objectives, and policies. If not, we'll make sure that it is.
Okay, thanks.
Or part of the comp plan, adding stoplights in places that are needed throughout the county. Do you guys have that in there as well?
That would be a really specific item. That's kind of more at the traffic engineering level. So maybe that's digging a little bit deeper into more the specifics of your transportation system. We could include a policy to say that, you know, evaluate different intersections throughout the county, maybe do a study to understand where you may need traffic lights. But that's usually a really detailed study, a warrant study to make sure, you know, that it makes sense to put in a light. And that's a little bit more detail than what we normally do in a comp plan.
Well, it's FDOT realm also.
If, yeah, if we're looking at a state road, sure.
We could look at that, though, and the level of service for the standards of infrastructure that we have. Are they sufficient, you know, for the impact they're making?
Exactly.
So we could put something to that level in there. We could.
One of the things you brought up was, you haven't, but it was on the, it was in the write-up, was the vacation rental issue, which is hopefully fixed. But do you think that needs to be addressed in this comp plan?
Now, there are certain preemptions at the state level, right?
Oh, we think we fixed that.
Is it fixed?
Not yet.
Yeah, yeah. So.
It's close.
Well, we'll wait and see. But yes, that has been an issue for a number of communities. So let's see what happens with the legislature. But yeah, something we can address.
And just kind of on top of that, the whole idea of tourism, which is important to the county economically, you know, tax-wise and everything else, there's been a lot of work done in that area by this county. So I think if there's places in the comp plan to mention that or whatever, I think stuff is there, you know, the information's there that you need. And I'm not really sure how much of that you have looked at or so forth. It's one of those things, again, that it's important to the county and important we say something about it.
Right, right. And that's, we have the economic development element that addresses, you know, the local economy and tourism and so forth.
You good?
We had a couple more. One was addressing the stormwater runoff for development. Do we want to stand with the water management districts? Or are we looking to implement anything more stringent than that for stormwater runoff?
The next step, right? That's the how do we get there part?
So that's, you know, if you want to look at your level of service, you know, it's probably 25-year storm right now. I'd have to check with, oh, Adam's shaking his head, yes. So you can make it more stringent. I mean, other communities throughout the state has, you know.
There's another one.
Yeah.
You can.
Well, we have a plan, right, coming out. We have a water management plan, stormwater management plan, coming.
This is for the runoff piece, like the, for the new development. Do you want to just stick with the water, you know, management? Or do you want something more proactive?
And if you have a stormwater master plans being developed now, then it should opine on the level of service standard.
That's our next workshop, March 4th.
Excellent.
My only final thing was, because we deal with it and we're in a vague gray area, was evaluating the annexations. And if we have a very stringent policy on it, whether and how do we handle it if we object to the annexation because it doesn't fit the statutes?
I'm glad you brought that up. And I was going to mention, if I, just real quick, we were talking about it a little bit. We haven't really effectively used joint planning here in the county or looking at inter-local service boundary agreements. Those are things that have worked really, really well in other counties that may not have the ability to provide, say, utilities across a county-wide scale. That's something I think we should really investigate. This is not something we can say in the comp plan, you need to do it and it's done. There's a lot of discussion, negotiation you have to do with, you know, the cities here in Flagler County. But those are tools that can help you with the annexation question and help you with development within those areas. Because those are areas outside of the cities. But you've agreed to provide certain services if, you know, a certain, you know, number of properties are annexed along the road or if, you know, if it's fire-related services. Again, the agreements can pretty much be whatever you want, but they're really, they really do help with growth.
The road maintenance issue as well.
That, too. Yeah, good point, yes.
Just to call up on the annexation thing, I like to look at things, like if you looked at the county in 1999, Palm Coast didn't exist as a city. In 2011, the amount of land that was county unincorporated versus the amount that's in the cities, it probably looks a lot different now in 2024. So as we look to 2050, that is a significant piece. What do we envision? What's going to be left of the county unincorporated land versus what's become annexed into the cities could be a pretty, I mean, Leon brought it up, too, could be a pretty big deal. If you look at just what's happened in the last 20, 30, or 25.
And also the road expansion needed around the county, commercial and residential developments that are coming in as we continue to grow, being ahead of that curve. You know, you see communities coming in and commercial coming in and same roads going on with infrastructure, repairing those roads because of all the construction, but also the expansion of those roads, you know, maybe not as much so after the fact, more, you know, within the development stages or even before the development stages, before the people come, right? Because once the people come, then expanding those roads are going to be much more difficult than it is doing it prior to.
Sure. That's a good point.
You talk about the annexations. I see there's three drivers to that. A small driver is taxes. A big driver is going to be in development codes. People will, especially large landowners, will go where the development codes allow them to develop, you know, favorably to them. And the third thing is the availability of infrastructure. So a joint infrastructure agreement with the other communities will help us quite a bit. I mean, that is an issue right now on 100. You know, if you want water, you have to be in the city. And so I think that is, to some degree, another driver of all that, that part of the puzzle to fix that is to solve those problems. I brought this up last time, and I'm just going to ask you again. You know, I talked about things, you know, you talk about 2050, you know, and again, I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just an optimist, but I, that I truly believe we're going to have self-driving cars that will be autonomously driven by themselves without people in them that will also be part of the, people talked about the public transportation system. You know, right now in big cities, they have car shares, that people are already sharing cars. Well, that goes right in line with self-driving cars. And it eliminates need of parking lots in some, in some areas, because if the cars drive you to your front door of your appointment and drop you off, you don't park the car in the parking lot. It goes somewhere else. But these vehicles need to be parked. They need to be maintained. They need to have fuel. They have to have all that. And again, what makes more sense to me is that these things will happen in large areas. You're going to have a large parking lot, whether it be fuel stations, service garages, working on those vehicles instead of having as big a parking lot in front of a Target or a supermarket. These cars would go, they would drop you off for 10 minutes or 20 minutes, do their service, and come back and, you know, and pick you up or pick up the next guy or whatever. We don't address where those things could happen, you know, or how that should happen and how that's going to, you know, affect. And not only just that one, that's just one element, you know, how will the internet affect our ability, you know, to do business and how that is going. So it's like a future cap. So I don't know what you do in your comp plan now, or we just amend the comp plan as future technologies come around.
I think from that perspective, again, it's evolving quite a bit. But I think it would be smart to study this as a, you know, again, not part of the comp plan, because again, we're looking at things, you know, 30,000-foot level, but do a study that really, you know, looks at the smart city concepts, you know. To be able to do that, you need to have the infrastructure. You need to have a fiber optic backbone across the entire county. You've got to have the 5G network, you know, the towers all throughout the county in order for that to happen, right? So there are things that you have to do first to get the automation to work. And then you can identify those sites where you have the fleet management or whatever the case may be, you know, charging stations and so forth. But I think it needs to be studied, you know, through, they have grants now that you can, you can go through the smart city grants and stuff. So those are things that.
No, what I was saying was, I know you can't write policies to that subject because it isn't quite developed yet. But do we place mark? Do we begin the discussion in the comp plan to allow for these things? So when these start happening, our comp plan never addressed it, nobody thought about it, now we have to start from scratch, is what I was getting at the last meeting.
But I think, I think you can take, you know, a more proactive role in identifying, maybe going and doing a study to see what you're, you know, what you may need to get to that point. And so you can put a policy in the plan to do that now. There are cities that are doing that, you know, as we speak. And I say cities, that's kind of the, that's who are doing it. I'm not sure I've seen it on a county-wide scale yet.
Periodic amendments to the land development code that, you know, highlight and make changes to accommodate technology.
Well, you're seeing that, and I may have brought this up, the vertipads, the, you know, the vertical automated, you know, flying taxis. Of course, it's not fully fleshed out yet, but there are, you know, cities that are already doing that now.
Yeah. One of the popular things that I've seen in, you know, admittedly, much more dense, more populous cities rather than counties, like Chris said, I haven't seen at the county level is to establish task force that stay abreast on the latest changes and monitor progress as it occurs throughout their jurisdictions. And then so I think it's, I think I've seen like biannually, they do reports, that they report back to their commission and talk about some of those changes and what they need to start implementing, if anything, in order to start accommodating those technologies. Just related to this conversation is electrical vehicle stations. I know other jurisdictions are starting to look at requiring them in all-new multifamily residential development. That's something that you may want to consider down the line or as, you know, part of ultimately a comp plan process. But, you know, moving ahead with progressive technologies, we are headed that direction. So we want to make sure that we consider those things as well.
We'll get it in there.
Back at you. It looks like we're tapped out.
Okay, so I think we've already addressed number two. So the remaining input, we've talked about that, you know, we, you know, we've got the website, we've updated that to include those two activities. Number three, does the, I think we've talked about this too. So does the community vision so far that we've talked about reflect your vision for the future of Flagler County?
Well, I mean, I've already stated, you know, the ones that, you know, that popped out, that we've got the historical, you know, conservation, preservation, infrastructure, water quality, those are main issues that have been picked up by the current input. I just am still, I go back to two. There's more things that we need to do to get the remaining public input on the second workshop. So whether it's internally, I think it's going to rely on us as a commission to be able to get outside organizations and meetings or town halls or something to continue to target populations in unincorporated county to get their input. I think it's unacceptable levels right now. So we have to work harder to get that.
Did you all get business cards from Simone?
Do we have, do we have business cards?
Yeah, I'll get those.
So Simone has.
I had a meeting at the Rotary, even if I'd have known, if I'd had this before, I would have, I would have had my presentation more concentrated on the comp plan and the surveys and things.
Yeah, there are opportunities where each of us speak at different organizations that we can help, you know, we can get.
Absolutely.
And as Mark said, there are some professional organizations I think you guys need to get in front of. I agree completely, Mark.
I think their scope is limited. I think it's falling back on us.
Yeah. But just, it's another input.
Yeah.
Just another input. And as far as, does it meet, does it reflect my vision? I think I've already made it clear, the west is different than the hammock, and we got to do that. You guys have got to figure that out. We've got to address the issue.
The only thing I was thinking about, you know, everyone is going to talk about, when you have these meetings, you're going to have people talk about conservation. I think that's very important. So I'm not underplaying that whatsoever. But I think another thing people are bringing up is the affordability aspect, which is a common refrain for both people who are responding to you and business people who are trying to get people to work. They don't even, you can't even find the working class people can afford to live here. It's been a refrain that a lot of communities, including ours, have had. So one of the balancing acts would be, you're talking about maybe increasing some of the wetlands stuff. You talk about increasing buffers and all these, and that's all fine. But every action, there's a reaction. So as you create more expensive development, there also goes up the price of housing. That in itself doesn't mean you don't do things. I'm just saying, we just need to look at how we do these. And that's also probably part of the commission's job more than yours. But if we just throw a bunch of protection in there without realizing how that protection could stop some of the other elements, I think we're not looking at the whole thing in general. So that was my concern, you know, is making sure that we don't, you know, cut off the head when we're trying to protect all the, you know, all the wetlands.
Well, and you had touched on this a little bit before, that if you're, if you're going to ask somebody to set aside some land, well, they're, you know, you're going to probably need to look at increasing densities to allow that to be feasible. You mentioned the cost. So you increase a little bit of density, but you get a little bit more land back for conservation. So those are things that we, and we talked about clustering, too. So those are things that we need to think about. And you should be able to cluster without having to do, you know, PUD, you know, those things should be, you know, allowed in the code today.
We should, you know, discuss clustering in a higher density in some areas to keep sprawl off farms. Because we hear all the time about how people want to protect our farms, and it's the number two economic driver in the county. Well, the number one way to do it is keep sprawl off of them. Because the more this stuff inches up on them, the higher their value of their land goes, the more apt to sell out they are, and things of that nature. And it is the number two economic driver right now in this county. They have no desire out there to get out of farming, but, you know, if we sprawl like that on top of them, they're going to collapse. So, and I don't, never want to see that happen. So.
There was a really good Thousand Friends of Florida webinar, was that last month, on conservation easements and farmland easements. I would really suggest the board, the boards take a look at that.
We've got a lot. So that's the other thing, too, we never really talk about, which is in the county seat, we've got several properties that have been identified by the state of the state wanting them to go into conservation. So they're on Hall Creek, they're on the Forever Florida list. They're in discussions now with that. So we have a lot of that, and we've got to, you know, recognize that those are probably in the next couple of years going to be in a permanent conservation easement out there. And so we need to, and then we have utility going possibly down at the south end of US1. And how do we want that to look like if we want to really remain strong and develop commercial in that corridor? You know, how do we work this comp plan to that? So there's just a lot of, like, moving elements that we have to really start thinking about, you know, some of our cattle going, you know, lands going into conservation, water coming into an area we've never had before, a utility where we want to strongly encourage commercial development. So we have a lot of things, kind of, we have to start thinking about, too.
I think to one point we are missing, because we're talking about densities, we're talking about affordability. We have to also look at tiny homes, tiny home clusters, where you could have, which will be more affordable.
will be more affordable, which is a good housing start, and you will have more open space than when you have a traditional subdivision.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, and I was thinking about that too, in our mobile home districts, expanding the option for tiny housing. Because what's happening out there is RVs are popping up, they're not connected to sewage, they're against our code, you know, but would a tiny home option alleviate the RV and get them onto a septic so that we're not having the dumping, you know? So in our already existing mobile home areas, but then that's something I guess we could always talk about as just a board because we do allow tiny homes, but it's restricted. But we do have some areas for that where we could look at that, which would create the affordability piece.
And decrease the wetland impact.
Right.
Stormwater impact.
Should we move on to question number four?
Sure.
Are we, have we exhausted number three? How are we doing with time?
We're good, we're 10 after, we're good.
Okay, okay. I want to make sure we, we get out of here so you can make the next meeting. Okay. So understanding that each vision theme is important. Which of the themes do you think is most important for the future of Flagler County? The most important? I know this is tough. Now we put you on the spot.
Are these the six items that you, the vision themes?
Right.
From the previous slide?
The, the 10 items here, why don't I go back? This one here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? You know, supporting ag, I mean, it's our number two economic driver here and they could do a lot more out there if we were, you know, unfortunately, some of our ag is intertwined in another municipality.
Yeah, and to second that, I think you can intertwine a couple of those because preserving ag goes right along with preserving rural areas, natural environment. I think they all kind of tie together, several of them tie together there.
Yep.
And you lump them into one, and that should be the focus, you know, keep this, keep this county, you know, as rural as we can and support preservation, support ag. Just be really smart about how we do this because, because I think, I think Leanne is correct, that as the, as the pressure to build more homes comes, then the, the realistic answer is that the farmers are going to sell. So let's get ahead of that. Let's try to stop that if we can by making it more attractive to keep the farmland farmland. And it goes with several of these, these visions tie into that, that answer.
Very true.
They tie into that answer.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I think to that same point, concentrating the future growth through existing urban areas, help support the ag and keep the rural areas, obviously, and maintain the improving, the infrastructure, improving existing infrastructure, getting with the concept of, of keeping it closer to, you know, rural, urban areas would help both those two aspects.
It'll also combine into the diversify local industry and employment opportunities. I mean, you're going to throw that in there as well.
He wanted one.
Well, no, this is-
Grouped into one. You know, you're going to take all those and you're going to group them into-
All right, just, I'm just kind of clarifying the rules. No, no, I understood.
Did, well, work, work our way up. We got Mr. Lombardo. Mike, did you want to?
I said what I had to say.
Okay, we heard from Greg, heard from Leanne, heard from Mark. I'm going to, since we're combining, the landscape architect to me wants to conserve everything, so conserve the natural environment. But the, our day-to-day activities require us diversifying our local industry and employment opportunities, so I'm going with the theme of picking two.
If I have to pick one, I would pick, because it would affect a lot of other things, I'd pick to concentrate future growth to existing urban areas because that would affect everything. And then I agree with you though, on if I had to have another one in there, I can go diversify local industry and employment opportunities because if we don't do that, we're going to get stuck.
That's right.
I agree with you.
I think if, if I was going to join in on this, I would pick a theme that isn't on your board here. My theme would be to be visionary. We're looking 30 years out, 25 years out. My experience, this county has a lot of, spends a lot of time looking in the rearview mirror. And if we're going to pick an important theme to move forward on, then let's do it in a visionary fashion rather than just reacting to what's happened in the past.
Well said. Mr. O'Brien?
You just got nominated.
We are looking at the nine visionary items, vision items, and trying to hone in on one that you would prefer or two. All of the above is not an option.
Probably a diversified local industry and employment opportunities.
All right, very good. Is that three for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Or four, because we have a ditto.
Okay, that's right. We have four.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. This vision is really important, and so collecting public input is really important as part of this process. Ideally, what we'd like you to see is that when we write the goals, objectives and policies in tandem with your public and your community, that you're able to verify with each and every goal, objective and policy within that plan that it does in some way supports one of these nines and in no way violates them. So that's a really important thing to note is it's just not lip service. The vision is something we take very seriously and something that we implement as part of the comp plan update and look at every single policy and make sure it's implementing some aspect of the vision.
I have one quick question for you guys too. Do you guys have, I mean, obviously I think you do, but other areas out there, counties that are very similar to us that, you know, they did their comp plan, they hit it out of the park? And, you know, so as an example that we can lean on and look at, you know, before we come back again and do it, I'd be curious to see what other counties have done that you feel have done a really good job in putting the comp plan together so we can maybe piggyback on them.
There, there are a lot of really good comp plans out there for sure. I don't know that they are exactly the model for a community like Flagler because you have a relatively, compared to the county as a whole, the unincorporated area has a relatively low population compared to, you know, the incorporated area. So from that aspect, we just worked in a county that's a lot more urban and they have, they're struggling with almost the same kinds of things. They're on the coast, they have a rural area, they're just, they just happen to be closer to a metropolitan area, so they're, they're expanding quite rapidly. So there are lessons to be learned from, you know, different jurisdictions for sure, but there are definitely best practices that we look at, you know, in, in helping us, you know, with ideas and strategies and things, but not one that we've recently worked on that's perfectly analogous to Flagler.
You're currently in St. John's County and Pasco.
Correct.
And probably others, but, but there, I think the point was, what counties have you, and again, we can't take things from somebody who doesn't have the same demographics or area, but a recently completed comp plan, I think is what he was asking.
Sumter County would be one that we've worked in recently and again, not perfectly analogous because they've got the villages and that's kind of a-
There we are.
A very unique, a very unique situation that not, you know, there's what, I think they span four different counties. They, I think just recently, I think they cleared and are building 10,000 lots at once. And mind you, this is all happening all at once.
Wow.
Yeah, and this is, again, this is completely, you know, different than what you're seeing maybe here in Flagler County, so. But what I will say is they do utilize the interlocal service boundary agreements with the communities there that works really, really well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let's kind of get it back for a minute.
Yep.
Do you, do you consider, or does it, does it, it kind of comes across all these, but, you know, we provide, even though the cities have most of the landmass, we provide most of the services to everybody in the county. Does that play into this comp plan?
Sure.
That we're, that we do, you know, all the senior services, all the food, all the ambulance, all the, all the law enforcement, you know, that, does that-
Now, those specific things aren't in the comp plan specifically, so you don't have like a, I mean, unless you want a level of service for law enforcement and, and fire, that we kind of run into some issues, you know, with, you know, maybe they're different organizations, so, and it's not required by state, so you probably don't want to go down that route. We don't normally recommend that you get into that. But indirectly, it does impact those. All right, I'm going to bring it back to you guys and then we can go to public comments. So was there anything you wanted to finish up on? Yes, so for next steps, I don't know if we had the next step slide there at the end. Let's see here. Whoop. Uh-oh. Don't know what happened there. I think he, is it, he's advancing. Okay, sorry about that. So as Nick mentioned, the next steps, you know, we're going to finalize the vision. We've got the activities out on the website. We're ramping up for workshop number three. But we're going to start looking at those goals, objectives and policies. Now, we understand there's still work to do with the vision, which again, we can continue to incorporate in the, in the plan as we work through that. And then in June, we should have a really good idea of where we're at in terms of the vision, again, getting more input through the, the website and working with staff on that. Do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I just want to give a quick plug to your staff. They've been very, very helpful for, with us throughout this process. That's not often the case, but we're lucky it is here. You know, in terms of public engagement, we have a wonderful graphic design team who's helped us throughout this process and through the leadership of staff have developed collateral that we didn't anticipate creating, you know, when we started the scope, but we knew that we have to pivot and that we have to, you know, do whatever is necessary to make sure that public engagement is, is done correctly here. And so we've continued, you know, working with your staff on that end and will continue to do so and support the county in whatever direction they want to pursue in terms of making public engagement numbers are up.
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Stick around, we're going to get some, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody wanted to address our combined board for public comment, just step up and address yourself.
Good afternoon, Richard Hamilton. I'm our resident of Island Estates in, on the Intra Coastal in the Hammock. I'm one of the few people, there are a couple of others here, who actually attended both workshops and I will continue to be involved, attend other workshops because it's such an important subject. I certainly agree with the need to get more public involvement. I had three, three comments. One, it was very difficult to envisage 2050. I'm going to be 100 years old then, so I may or may not be here, I may not be on the AYA. If I am, someone's going to be pushing me in a wheelchair. But that raises the question of who are we envisaging it for? For people our age or my age, it's, 2035 is a long way out. We should be getting more involvement, I believe, from students who'll be living here, parents and a lot of the younger people who have perhaps different interests from us. I hope not. I hope they still want the environment that brought us here in the first place. But so 2050 is a long way away to get people involved, and if you can outreach to younger people, so much better. Secondly, I find it very difficult in the presentations that we were only envisaging the unincorporated county. The reason you have so many stickers in Flagler Estates is I was given four, five red stickers and I said, well, where's growth going to be? It's going to be in the unincorporated areas, in Palm Coast and so on, but I couldn't put my stickers there. So where do I put them? But somehow we need a better process for linkage between the county's strategic plan or comprehensive plan and the city's comprehensive plan. We are one county. Maybe by the time 2050 comes around, Flagler County won't even exist anymore because all the unincorporated areas have been annexed into Palm Coast and Denau and Flagler Beach and so on. So that's something that you really have to consider, getting a better integration of where we're going to do and where the development's going to be. And the third comment is growth is not inevitable. A lot of the assumptions are that, oh, growth's going to happen, it's going to be there, we've got to cater for it. One of the jobs that we have, you have, is to control that growth in the right directions and, and grow where we want that growth to be, the jobs, the environment. We certainly want affordable housing. I mean, I live in a mansion, but that's not a, and I don't mind paying for things like my own seawall and beaches and things like that, but we need more housing, but we need it for the people who are, we want here. If we build vast housing tracts, then you're going to attract vast growth, influx of new people. We need to look at providing affordable housing for the people who are here, our nurses or, and so on. So I just want to make those comments and you'll hear a lot from, more from me as we go on.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, just one comment. My mother is celebrating her 100th birthday this year, so don't give up on it, man. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Jody Bollinger. I live at 5648 North Ocean Shore Boulevard in Hammock. I just had, I think, two questions because I heard many of you talk about using existing urban areas when we have growth. And I'm, I'm just curious, in unincorporated Flagler County, where do you see those areas? I mean, are we talking about south of the airport? Are we talking about the barrier island? Because there are a lot of, like, the Hammock dunes over there, so where are those areas? And the other thing was, I heard many of you comment about diversify the local industry and employment opportunities. And at other meetings I've attended, I've heard that you cannot do that unless you have the infrastructure. And a lot of that growth would take place on US1, so what's the plan to get the infrastructure out there so that we can do that? Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Next speaker, Greg Davis, Hammock Dunes Owners Association. Good to thank you for your time. Just a couple of questions that I had for you from a planning perspective. One of the questions I have is, in your considerations, is your, I think you have a compound annual growth rate of probably around 14% or something like that, 14, 15% for the county. So what 14% for the county growth rate means to me is, is it probably 50%, approximately 50% of your folks living in the county have been here less than three years. So my question along that line would be, what is the data being collected on those with that high growth rate of people coming here and what they're coming here for and how does that, how does that get incorporated into your planning process is one thing to consider. One of the other questions I have on your data collection side is, on your data collection side is, I believe in your data collection, you corrected names and addresses and things like that of people. So to me, to be able, if you have names and addresses of those people, to be able to just to, to put that visually into a data, you can see where the survey data is kind of coming from and what the clusters kind of look like, which I think would also be kind of useful as well. My other question, it happens to deal with your, with your current plan. And what is the performance against your current plan from a strategic perspective? And what kind of gap analysis has been done? And also against your current plan, right? Which I think would probably be some interesting data- Which I think would probably be some interesting data to know, and as a resident, would be important data for me to know, what the performance of your current plan is as you're envisioning the perform, going forward, what your plan is going to look like. So to me, from a data collection perspective, there's lots of things to kind of consider. One, high growth rate, 14%, 50% roughly of residents, haven't been here before in the past three years, five is even a greater number. What brought those folks here? I don't know if there's existing data that has collected. I would assume from the Realtors Association or whatever might have existing data of why people are coming here and what their expectations are for as well. And in terms of infrastructure, you talk about your, which is a good comment, municipal service agreements on that for utilities and infrastructure. In Florida, I know from Hammock as an example, we have CDC, Community Development Corporations, right? Which provide utilities and infrastructure. What's the relationship those as well, and what's your strategic plan going forward from a CDC perspective and providing utilities and infrastructure from a growth perspective? Also, with the high growth rate within the county, within the city itself, what's the relationship of the city plan versus the county plan as well? Because that, to me, has a big, big, big impact on what the county's plan is going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
David Eckert, Cali del Sur, Palm Coast. I'd like to encourage you to take the ownership back, Andy, as you were talking about relative to this process. And I know it has a 2050 date, but I think it's in chunks of eight years, as I understand the statute at the state level. So I'd like you to maybe change the title to say 2050, but with checkpoints every eight years, and I'd encourage you to make it a living plan, and all nine objectives should stand up there, and you should recheck that mix within that, and you could even shorten it to five years or something like that. I'd check against other counties, but I think that if I listen to the quality of your discussion and also the responses from the consultant relative to the quality of the discussions that you brought up, as the public is looking at this process that you're doing, the quality's not showing through, and I want to make sure that you understand that. So they're not responding to you with the input that is of the quality that you deserve based upon the interactions that you're talking about. So all of the ideas relative to what Commissioner Sullivan said on the two topics that he picked and the other people, it's down to about four or five options. And if the public understood that you had a direction towards these two for the first three or four years, that you might switch depending upon whether the technology occurs the way that you were talking about on self-driving cars or other technology changes. So you're juggling between technology changing, you're talking about the population changing that Mr. Davis just talked about for 15% growth. So I think calling this not a permanent comprehensive plan and talking about a living adjustment with checkpoints as you go through describes what you're actually thinking about and will better capture the quality of what you're talking about. Because the process that the public is seeing by having these workshops are nowhere near the quality of the discussion that you've just had. And that's the same thing I told you after the first meeting in this room when you kicked it off, is the quality of what you're talking about, what you already know, I don't see the process actually improving what you have in your minds. So somehow, the process has to catch up with what you're talking about, and that's got to be communicated to the public so that the public can give you quality response. That is not happening at the present time, is my judgment. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good afternoon. Robin Paletta. I live right over the county line, so I'm ex-officio, I suppose is the term. Okay. I have four observations. Number one, after looking at the mess of the Belvedere Fuel Terminals proposed in Volusia County and Ormond Beach, and the county council being caught flat-footed and not really having a good review, prior review of their heavy industrial plant, site plantings, first of all, even identifying that zoning. My question is, does Flagler have heavy industrial zoning in place? Have you identified those areas where they can be, occur without having such a negative environmental impact? So I would, I would raise that question. Number two, conservation easements are huge, especially for farmers in the western part. Definitely, that would be a way to help preserve them and protect them from taxes and the temptation to sell to developers. And number three, in looking at technology, I think one thing that the COVID pandemic taught us was the value of remote work. I have a daughter who works for Google, another daughter who's an engineer with GM, and for three years, basically, they were doing remote work. My one daughter who works for Google, her direct reports, one is in Mountain View, California, the other direct report is in New York City. She lives outside of Detroit, and so she has easy access in terms of being able to fly in and out to meet, to go to those meetings in California and New York. I think that could be a target demographic, a younger target demographic that would be vastly appealing both for our tax base and also for the issue of culture. The last item is outreach. There are a ton of HOA organizations. I know that professional organizations such as Rotary, Flagler County Association of Realtors, those are very important, too. But those weigh at one end, and we really need to reach out to the homeowners. And you're going to do that through the HOAs, the schools, and also through our local media. If the consultants had reached out to the Observer, I don't get the Observer anymore, and so I don't know if they did, but if they had reached out to the Observer to run a series of articles providing the links and urging people to participate or to Flagler Live, which is, has a huge, huge audience, that would have been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Most of y'all know who I am. I'm Preston Zeppl, Flagler County Historic Society, and about 16 other historic groups. You were talking about historic sites. We have 649 historic sites that we have documented with MSF here in Flagler County. Historic and agriculture tourism is a big missing part. It's a moneymaker. Look at St. Augustine, and all theirs is historic tourism, but they're dropping the ball now. We should be picking it up. Only about 20% of the county's historically surveyed, a cultural resource survey, especially the west side, it hasn't really been done. I think we've got 30 sites over there that we know of. Historic Society, here's those 649 sites. We have them documented. We're still working on more. I spent Friday almost tip-deep in mud looking for a bridge. Another question I have, or point, Matanzas, or Palm Coast is building a road out in Matanzas Woods. It's going to go near Brick Road, come down, go up Palm Coast Parkway. Well, it's fine, except for it goes across county property, Pringle Swamp, where is it still county property? That area was a big Native American and turpentine industry hotbed, and I don't understand how the city is running across county property of an area that has not had a survey done. That's why I know it's county. It's just some stuff I'm looking at, and since historic tourism was brought up, I'm really surprised. That one really shocked me. People are interested in the history here. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a five o'clock meeting to get ready for, so I hope you got all your comments in. If not, go online, take that survey, those two surveys. It's up on the website now, and share that link and get it out to as many people as you can. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn today's workshop. Thank you very much. Thank you.